Okay, let's go ahead and get started on at our city commission meeting. Welcome, it's February 4th. Let's go ahead and stay stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, let's go ahead and do public comment. Have one person signed up? Any public comment? Okay, well seeing none, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments? Okay. Linda, Lynn?
No.
Did you have something, Linda?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. I did want to say last Friday, the city commissioners, we all met at the Flint Hills Discovery Center along with our some of our city staff to discuss city commission goals. And Ron Fear, our city manager, is going to consolidate all of them and we should have them back to the public in about a month or so. We will revisit. Typically, we review projects or our goals from the past couple of years. Some we have completed, some that are ongoing, and some that we might still need to push forward with for several more years, and some new ones we may have added on to the list. So, once again, once we get all of those out, we will we will make it available for public and have another discussion to make sure we are confirmed on what we want for the next couple of years. There is something called Planning and Pints. It's at the Tap House tomorrow, I believe, 6:30 to 9:00, and I think Chad, are you the mediator for that one? I don't know.
I'd say that.
Runs the show. If you want to know things that are going on in Manhattan as far as projects and neighborhoods and such, you know, Tap House is a great place. That's a great fun place to meet and talk about things that are concerned to you and your neighborhoods or in the surrounding area and either learn something new or ask questions in a non-televized manner with some experts at your at your disposal. With that, we will go on to our consent agenda. The items on consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? Any public comment? Seeing none, please call the roll. Oh, we need a motion. Is there a motion?
Consent agenda?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebrock?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next is a public hearing on special assessment and Rena is going to present on the special assessments this evening.
Good evening, commissioners. In your package, you received information about our special assessment process for May 2020, and I would like to go over that information with you this evening. The city sells bonds twice a year, normally May and November. For the May series, the city includes all special assessment projects. We have this May 2020 series, 20 projects that we will be bonding. The benefit districts were created by petition in a resolution on January 21st. The city commission set February 4th as the date to hold a public hearing. An ordinance levying special assessments against the benefiting property properties is presented in the packet, and all property owners were notified by letter about the amount and purpose of their assessment. I noticed a public hearing was published in the Manhattan Mercury as well. This evening, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear questions or objections from property owners concerning their assessments. We have received five calls regarding the letters and this the special assessment process in general. We have received no calls regarding the calculation or any technical issues regarding the assessments. When you first received your packet last week, we had 23 projects included in there. And after the letters were sent out, one of the developers had contacted us requesting that their assessments and their temporary notes be extended for a year. We contacted our bond council and consulted with city administration to get confirmation that we could extend those for one more year, and it was approved by all parties. And so, we gave that courtesy to that developer, and that information is presented in your packet as well. It was for the Highlands at Grand Mary Unit 1 and Prayer Village. And so, the cost that we would bond in 2020 for special assessments is $4,895,000. The projects are listed, Pinehurst Edition, Scenic Crossing Edition, Lansdowne, Unit 3, Ledstone Edition, Ledstone Ridge Edition, Legacy Ridge Edition, and Wells Landing. And those are the total costs. There is a city at large portion related to Ledstone Ridge Edition, and that amount is being paid for by the bonded interest fund. And that's for a trail. Here is the map. The map is appears better in your packet, but it lists all the properties and the benefit districts within the city that are going to bond in May 2020. Our next steps, the second reading of the special assessment ordinance will be considered on February 18th. Property owners will receive a second letter, which gives them the opportunity to pass their assessments, pay their assessments in full by March 20th. If not paid, the assessments will bond in May and be amortized over 20 years, and our bond issue will be on May 19th this year. Assessments will appear on the November 2020 tax statements. And that is all for my presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Okay, questions? Thank you, Rena. Questions for Rena?
Public? I just want to ask that one, just to just to clarify, as everybody knows, that city at large portion had to do with parks.
There is. If it's a trail that was, if you recall, where the Ledstone Ridge comes off of Miller Parkway, just just to the east of Seating Drive. It's the new one that's kind of along that ridge and is part of that subdivision. The developer cooperated to put in a trail that would link the park on the south, and then there was additional parkland acquired on the on the north. So, it's a linkage down to the other subdivisions above Annenberg Park and west of Annenberg Park. So, connects with the sidewalk system and then connects to the bridge that goes into Annenberg Park. So, it was a cost share on the trail with the subdivision and the city at large, and that's our share.
Yeah, I think that was a good thing, just so people understand, you know, what that is, because that helps us with the trail system and connecting the parks.
Other questions? And public comments, public hearing? Opening up the public hearing. Seeing none. Public hearing period is closed. So, somebody like to read the motion?
I will. I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments against the benefiting properties in the following 20 projects, which have been completed. Pinehurst Edition, Sanitary Sewer Street and Water, Scenic Crossing Edition, Sanitary Sewer Street and Water, West Anderson Avenue Street, Lansdowne Edition Unit 3, Sanitary Sewer Street and Water, Ledstone Edition, Street and Water, Ledstone Ridge Edition, Sanitary Sewer Street, Multi-Use Trail and Water, Legacy Ridge Edition, Sanitary Sewer Street and Water, and Wells Landing, Sanitary Sewer.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebrock?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next, we're on the general agenda. Tonight's a discussion, we're going to do an overview of proposed Manhattan Housing Market Analysis and Policy Strategy Study and draft request for qualifications. Chad Bunter, Assistant Director of the Community Development, is our presenter.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and the commissioner commission. So, I don't think it's a surprise that there is a lot of conversation about the availability of quality affordable housing in Manhattan and the region. And because of that important topic, a number of groups and folks have had discussions and are generating solution ideas on the topic. And so, in this year's budget, we were approved to have this housing market analysis and policy strategy study to help with that conversation and help with the direction there. And so, provide a an overview of what we're thinking the study will look like, and that goes along with the draft request for qualifications that was included in your packet. The idea here is that we would hire a consultant or consultant team to help the community develop this critical comprehensive housing policy document that'll provide us with strategies, policies, projects, and programs to address suitable housing needs for Manhattan. We're using the term suitable housing rather than affordable housing or whatnot as a as a broader term to emphasize that we're not just talking about the price tag of a home, but that the house or our housing needs include the size, the type, where it's located, those sort of things to address that whole the whole element of of housing. Before I get too far into these elements that we've laid out in the request for qualification and kind of how we envision the project to go, give you a little bit of understanding of some assumptions that we made in creating this. So, there's obviously been a lot of conversation around the topic and a lot of great ideas for solutions, but city administration felt that maybe there isn't the the community has may have not fully may not fully understand or grasp the situations that are facing us when it comes to housing. And so, what we wanted to do here is use a data-driven approach first to lay out what our problems are and what those issues may be before we dive into possible solutions and those sort of things. So, that's really kind of how we've laid this out. The baseline element is to get an understanding of today's housing stock, home sales that are going on today, the demographics, economic indicators, cost of living, those sort of things for the entire region. I don't I don't have a full, I couldn't explain to you exactly what the the region's boundaries are. We'll you we'll let our consultant that we'll eventually hire help guide us and frame that for us, but it will be a regional look at what the baseline information is. We'll then take that information and project out into the future what our housing what our community may look like in terms of demographics and the economy, the homes that we've built or will build, excuse me, based on trends, so we know in the future what those needs will be. We anticipate that'll be a 20-year projection. Again, we'll rely on the expertise of our consultant team to help us figure that out precisely, but we we want to cast a very broad horizon so we can get a full understanding of of what's in front of us. And then, from there, we'll figure out, all right, if we we know we're going to have this many folks and we're only building this many homes, then we have a gap in a certain element of our market. And so, we know that going into working with the community to determine our vision and our goals for this policy document. Try and again to establish what our our data points are early in this project rather than jumping straight to the end to discuss solutions. As you can see there, we've mentioned or I note we'll have significant public involvement, so we'll we'll engage citizens, stakeholders, in a variety of formats to get their input for for the creation of the vision of goals. From there, we'll do a little bit of nasal naval gazing, looking at our belly buttons to see what are we doing to hinder addressing our suitable housing needs, be it land use codes or building codes, you know, internal market issues, financing, those sort of things. And then, all that then gets funneled into recommendations for strategies, policies, et cetera. We'll definitely rely heavily on the expertise within Manhattan, but then also the expertise from our consultant. And then, finally, we're going to ask the consultant to provide us evaluation tools for those strategies. So, the idea is that this is not just a snapshot in time, and then once, you know, in the next couple of years, we shelve it because it's outdated. We want to be able to evaluate routinely evaluate the the policies and programs to make sure that we're we're meeting those needs and we don't let the information get Some areas of emphasis, if I didn't already say this, we will analyze the entire housing market, so both the owner and rental markets from the high end down to the low end and everywhere in between, with a with a high focus on data as well as spatial relevant information. So, we'll be able to apply this in mapping software to see if there's any hidden pockets of success or not so great issues across the city. I think I mentioned the the projection year and how much we will value and want input from the public. I don't think I said this, but our intent is that this will be a policy document for the city of Manhattan. I know there's plenty of housing going on in every direction outside of the city limits, but with limited resources that we have and the fact that we don't have jurisdiction in those areas, this the focus will be for the city of Manhattan. Housing's not or housing is definitely a regional issue, and so, we'll work with our partners in the region where we can to address those things where we could partner and maybe gain some economies of scale or do those sort of things. But the largest focus will be within the city. We'll have an emphasis on low to moderate income, households, student housing, and then housing for soldiers and their families. I I hope we are able to tease that information out. I have a suspicion that the student housing may shadow our other housing needs within the city. For instance, if you look at the census report for Manhattan, we have a little over 25% of Manhattan residents living at and below the poverty rate. And one could easily say that's largely due in part due to our students who go to school full-time, maybe work part-time, and then have other sources of financial support. But I'm afraid that maybe making that quick judgment may overshadow some other housing needs that our Manhattan, you know, our neighbors face. So, I'd like to tease those elements out just to get a better understanding of of that full spectrum. And then, I hope I explain the the evaluation tool that we want to do or get from our consultants So, in addition to gaining input from the public, we'll definitely have this effort be led with some sort of committees. Don't know exactly what that will look like, and we'll we'll wait till we get a consultant on board to see how they would prefer it. I would imagine we'll have some sort of technical committee as well as a citizen committee. And this long list is definitely not exhaustive of who could be on those committees, but it gives us an idea of some folks that we may want to invite along with this study. I think I have one more slide and we'll be done with this and kind of give you an overview of the timeline. So, depending on how this discussion goes, if if you give us a green light, we'll finish up the RFU and get it back in front of you in a couple of weeks, and then go through the procurement process as quick as we can with the anticipation we'll get to get the consultant on board sometime June, July, and then take about a year to 18 months to complete the study. So, I went through that quickly. Hopefully, I covered all the things, and if not, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, just to the paper had some stuff on that. What your slides don't have is cost and funding source for that cost.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Cost of the project?
Yes.
And the funding sources?
I didn't mention that, I apologize. So, the the budgeted item is $95,000. We looked at other communities. Topeka is going through a pro a pro a project now. Lawrence went through one a few years ago, and both of them cost about that, 75,000 to 100,000. The the dollar, how that split up is through a few different funds, and I think through the three utility enterprise funds, and then I have it here, excuse me. What's that? Economic Development Fund, yes. So, split four ways, I do believe.
Other questions for Chad?
So, how is this information going to be better than the enlightened self-interest of a developer putting his and his banker's money at risk? They will obviously do research to figure out what's the market needs and various things like that.
Sure.
And unless the city is going to get into the building houses and renting them out and subsidizing, I don't know what projects and programs and stuff the city's gonna gonna be able to implement that's the proven affordable housing, the projects that the city does are facilitating the tax state tax credit housing, which we've got a couple hundred of them. It's waiving $50,000 worth of hookup fees so that they could make affordable housing up there in Miller Ranch, and that is the only thing I think the city should be doing to make housing more affordable because we're going to be fighting market forces of supply and demand, and right now, there's a lot of supply and not much demand. And so, over and I don't see any of that changing significantly over the next 18 months. And so, that that will continue to drive the price of rents down, making them more affordable, just like 15 years ago when we're people were complaining about affordable housing, and I kept saying, supply, supply, we need more supply. And that will drive the price of housing down, and it eventually has now with the decreased enrollment at K-State. And so, I hate to sit here and bark too much because I'm not going to probably vote yes to even fund this thing when the time comes, because while the information is handy, we can driving down the streets, talking to developers, talking to landlords, talking to people, we ought to be able to figure out, we got way too much of this that's sitting empty. The developers and people who are putting their own money at risk will know what kind of things that are selling that they should build, and I just don't know where the city's role in making figuring out, well, we need more affordable housing. Well, get a roommate. That's the most affordable thing that anybody can ever do for their house to drop down, drive down their housing costs. Everybody would like to have a one-bedroom apartment, live by themselves, and have a dog. Well, that's $700 a month with the with the pet rent. And so, maybe you don't always get exactly what you want, but there's ways, get a roommate, get a two-bedroom for 750 bucks, and don't get a dog, and suddenly, you got 200 bucks more in your pocket every month. And so, I'm going to stop now, but I would just wonder that I don't know where this is this is going to give us piles and piles of data which people will ponder and and drink a lot of coffee over, but I don't really know, at the end of the day, what will the city do with this information that's outside of the realm of what the marketplace will already determine this community needs? That's a long, you don't even need to answer that, but that's, but if you want to.
So, I don't know what those solutions will be like. I get your point about the city participating in the free market. Never in my wildest dreams will I envision that or or would support that this data would be used to, you know, dictate annexation or rezoning efforts. That's free market, and I don't want to interfere with that. What I think it could do on that topic is better inform developers and lenders of what may be needed, so they have the best information. Sitting through public, or excuse me, pre-application meetings, I hear the gamut of we need more single-family, we need more for or single apartment, single-bedroom apartment, or we need four-bedroom apartments. Never I've heard a consensus from developers of what Manhattan truly needs, so I hope this information will help that. Also, there is no doubt a section of our housing market that is not cost-effective for a developer, that they will need some sort of assistance. And I'm not suggesting necessarily that the city subsidizes that or uses those funds, but we certainly have partners within the community and maybe generate more partners to help with those housing segments, because it's, you know, those are our folks that do a variety of things around the community that we need, and if we don't have those, we don't have appropriate housing for them, then we don't have those jobs and and, you know, a lot of things don't happen in Manhattan. So, that's how I see this working is some suggestions or recommendations that maybe not the city undertakes completely, but our partners in the housing world could help with, so.
Yeah, well, comment, I agree with what Commissioner Hassel said. As I as I thought this over, it's like, fine, we'll get this study and we'll have all this data, and the government's not going to be able to do anything with it, execute a plan, because it's not, you know, there's two kinds of data. There's data and there's useful data.
Sure.
And this may not be useful data to what a local government agency can actually do something with. You know, it troubles me, you know, we want to spend $95,000 on a consultant, and I got a couple emails from some of the local builders, I won't give you their names, but they felt like, you know, if we just put together this, you know, housing advisory board that we talked about at the retreat and put some of the local people in here and just got them together, sort of like that flood committee we had, that they can probably produce as good a data as any consultant can, and it won't cost us $95,000. And and the other thing that I find interesting there is that part of affordable housing is your water bill and your sewer bill. And what are we doing? We're funding an affordable housing study by, again, pirating money from the enterprise funds, and I clearly am not going to support that. That that's lunacy again. You know, how can that help us with affordable housing? You know, the main thing we can do with affordable housing is drive down property tax. You know, we can control codes, zoning, all those things. So, you know, in my mind, this is just not a good expenditure, $95,000, and it's definitely not a good expenditure of enterprise money.
I do have a question, and that is about the census data.
Yes.
And when it will be available to this consultant rather than creating a study that does not have access? We've been living with 2010 census data for a long time.
Sure.
And it has distorted things, as far as I'm concerned it has, because we don't have good real data. So, how soon is, you're also in the census?
Correct.
What do you call it? One? What's the name of the census group you're in, anyway? So, one count or something?
Census count, no?
Okay, whatever it is. So, how soon and will will this study, will the census data be completed in time for this study to have use of it?
So, this April will be the the first round account. They'll do a follow-up in the community in July or the summer. And we, after they process it, and we probably won't see any certified information from the US Senate to census until late 2021. So, we're a good year and a half, two years from from seeing that information. We do have census infom census estimations, annual estimations that that augment the, you know, the every 10-year census, so it's not as if we are living without census data. It's just not the complete count that happens every 10 years. But it is it is highly relevant and and good data, and we use it all the time. and we use it all the time for information throughout the city.
I do know that this study has been put off several years because it's on the CIP, I think, and it's been pushed forward, and, um, I believe our community could benefit, could have benefited from it in the past on some of the decisions we've made, and I think it is important that we know our community, and, and that kind of data is important, uh, at least as I look at, uh, the materials that are developed. Um, I wanted to ask, too, about, um, where ordinary citizens are listed in your, um, your, uh, you've got committees, but I wanna be sure that citizens have, have the opportunity for input also.
Yeah, uh, the, I haven't spelled out exactly how that engagement will work. Uh, just really want the expertise of the consultant. But through this whole visioning, barrier analysis, and developing of the recommendations, we look to engage the broader public extensively, be it open houses, committee meetings, forums like this, uh, online elements where we can provide information or, or seat feedback. Um, you know, there's, there's multiple ways we wanna get to, um, you know, folks that are not on a particular committee but are willing to, uh, provide their input.
One of the interest areas I have had for the last couple of years is what the homeless population is in this community, and I have, I really can't get that from any one source that is, um, that isn't three years old, or, you know, I see Topeka has a, and other communities have a, one day, they just did their homeless count, and that's what they'll use all year long. Uh, ours is more, uh, difficult to come by, and so, uh, the opposite of a housing study is home, would be the homeless count. And so, I would like to try to identify that number, too, as, uh, not, uh...
Well, I believe, well, for sure, that segment of our population will be included in this, in, um-
Okay.
And I believe we did a similar, uh, homeless, uh, residence count, if you will, um, just last month, I believe it was. Um, Commissioner, did I see a-
Yeah, so the point-in-time count is done nationally every year, and that's what you're referring to, is like, uh, January twenty-third or something?
That it happened here?
Sure. It has to, it's a HUD requirement. Um, those numbers, that definition of homelessness is not the same definition the school district uses, so it's a different number, but it's available. We also fall into what is-
Where is it available?
The, I can send it out, but it's the HUD website. Where the balance of state is what we fall into. That's why it's easier when you look at Topeka, they have a number. We fall under with the balance of state. It's basically everyone else, it's not a big metro.
Okay. Because I think that's an important, uh, figure also, and around the country, the number of homelessness, number of homeless is going up, and, uh, I think we need to keep an eye on what's happening here in that regard. So, I am particularly interested in the affordable part of this study, and that would be my emphasis, and that's probably what I'm gonna call it throughout the whole thing, is, I meant, this started out as an, you know, an effort to identify the affordable, uh, issues, and, uh, I, I don't want this study to be completed without having, uh, addressing that.
Right.
And, and, uh, so you read the whole thing and you can't find what that part.
Sure.
That's important. So, uh, I wanna be sure more citizens are involved. I know the special interests will show up, and they'll be the voices that are loudest, but ordinary citizens are, uh, should be able to participate. We have some old housing stock here, and I wanna be sure that that gets addressed also. Thank you. It's not gonna be easy, right?
No, it will not, but it is, I think, a vital, uh, policy document for us.
So, I have a couple, well, first of all, the timeline, um, just wanna be clear, 'cause that kinda sets some of my questions up. The July to December twenty-twenty-one is project completion. Is that-
Somewhere in there, yes, sir.
So, that's, uh, talking about eighteen months from now, then we'd have this piece of paper, um, potentially for a next commission to act on, but basically is what we're looking at. So, that, uh, is a long time. And so, that goes back to my question of, I, I guess, let me start out by saying, you, you mentioned this as suitable housing, and I noticed in the, the writing, uh, workforce housing's listed. You mentioned affordable housing and others, but workforce housing is the, the perspective that I come from because that has always been missing from this, uh, argument. It's secular. We are, we heard it tonight on, from the commission, that we have anecdotal evidence. Why don't we get these developers together? They can support. There's, and then it goes into student versus developers, um, types of arguments when the data that we often see points to, "We're missing a workforce. We're missing that backbone, or that blue collar, that type of, uh, worker that would actually spur business and draw in business." Uh, we don't have the labor force, so it goes back to retention and talent, and so that's why I say workforce, because we have to stop thinking about this as affordable student housing or unaffordable, uh, to some people that need to let the invisible hand of the market solve the problems. So, that, us versus, yeah, versus them makes this important to me in that it's a, it's a document that would help with objective analysis and give us a foundation to build a consensus around of what the problem is.
Right.
Because who, we could look at these stakeholders, we could have all of these people listed right here on your advisory committee, and they could probably craft, um, different papers. I know K-State people could definitely craft papers and developers. Everybody's gonna have their angle and, and do the, the work, but if we don't have a, if we don't have buy-in from this commission, and we don't have buy-in from the people that would be, uh, utilizing that information, that this is objective and it doesn't have a slant towards, uh, one developer or one segment of the community, then it isn't worth anything. So, we must do that, and this is, seems like the only way that we could get a piece of paper that, it gives us data that isn't already tainted by somebody's history or baggage in the community that has a agenda, so to speak. So, that makes it worth it to me, um, and I think that we have to remember when we talk about, yeah, it would be, it would be easy to get those certain people to the table, and I think we have, we have eighteen months before this paper is, is ready. Uh, if we move forward, then we need to do things between now and then, and that includes creating that, I think, uh, advisory board, that, it looks like you have some of the makeup potentially here. There's ways to explore that. Um, look at, what, what do we do with this document? There's a, there's all kinds of things that we can do with it, and I, I, uh, my background is working with homelessness and with HUD, so I speak this language a little bit, and I think there's so many, there's so many grants and opportunities that you can apply for if you have something like this available that isn't just from a developer, right? Like, that it is a part of your consolidated plan, is part of your vision. There's ways to get outside funds. There's ways to get private buy-in and then potentially work with, uh, businesses in the community, uh, to, to, around that cost. But we have the opportunity to do something between now and next July. I would suggest putting some of those people that feel like they have the evidence, and if they wanna work on their own, if they wanna present that data, this, this would not do anything but validate or, or invalidate their data. I think that's the, the key here. We have something to work towards, but in the meantime, we can't just sit here and do nothing. There's a ton of housing stock that isn't in this purpose for the last decade and isn't ready for the next decade of, of our workforce. Uh, let's not wait two years to start repurposing that housing. We could do revitalization projects in the next eighteen months, get that going either through other funds or whatever, but this is a, this is an end goal or a milestone in showing us where we are at to have objectivity across the board.
Yep, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, so, uh, that's a, quite a bit of information, but, um, ever since I came on the board on the City Commission, even before I came onto the City Commission, the conversation has always been around housing, whether it's rental housing, suitable housing, affordable housing, K-State housing, whatever it is. It's always been about housing, but we've never had anything concrete to hold on to. So, I think that is something we need to have, is the data piece, and to have somebody that's, uh, impartial, so they don't have some kind of other interest in it except providing us clear data.
Sure.
Uh, you know, we always have, uh, numbers anywhere from sixty to sixty-five about rental housing, percent for rental housing. Uh, we have, I know that the, um, Habitat for Humanity is always looking for houses or property, and then they realize that a majority of our property is rentals, and they couldn't really do much with that in the city of Manhattan, so they moved to either Romigo or to Ogden and other areas to do this. Uh, this is worth putting some money into mainly because, like I said, the study will give us some, um, concrete data from an impartial party where this is their strength, and having some stakeholders from our community be a part of that is a big change for us as well, to be, uh, part of that discussion. One of the things we heard at the goal-setting retreat was Trent Armbrust when he presented, and, uh, we also heard from Patty Clark when she presented, and some of the other presenters at the regional, uh, leaders, uh, meeting in Alata, was the demographic of seniors increasing, and they need a different type of housing, whether it's ranch housing, whether it's a smaller, uh, uh, type of housing, uh, whether it's more access for entryways and such, and that's not a piece we've always discussed. We've always discussed students and Fort Riley, but we haven't discussed its other increasing demographic in our community and through, throughout our region. And that's what I heard loud and clear, and I think that's the piece that may not show up at, at a City Commission meeting, that may not show up at any of the discussions we have, but we know the need is there because I've heard it at least three or four times in just the past couple of weeks.
True.
So, I think that's something we need to, um, understand. It's not just the young professionals, and it's not just students, and it's not just Fort Riley. We have an entire demographic that we need to think about that are on fixed income, that do wanna stay in their homes, that may have health issues, uh, and they want to be, uh, the other piece we heard was that most of people wanna be in a high-density area. What does that look like? Property valuations go up when you have businesses and such that also create property valuations to go to increase regardless of what we do with the, uh, mill levy here. Uh, if you're in a, um, in a community that's growing, your property valuations are gonna go up. And when I hear faculty moving, um, sorry, working at Kansas State University, they love coming to the university, but their assumption is, "Oh, it's Manhattan, Kansas, the prices must not be that high for housing." And there's always sticker shock when they come here, and I've heard that continuously as well, that they've never realized how much, uh, more expensive it is than what they anticipated. We're talking two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars, and that's not what they expected. So, I think, uh, and they're moving to our surrounding region. They're moving out of Manhattan or choosing to live outside of Manhattan. So, if we wanna keep them here, we need hardcore data. I do agree it's about supply and demand, but chances are, even what we have right now is, is expensive for a lot of people, um, and the homelessness piece. So, as a teacher, one of the things I noticed, uh, at Ogden and other schools is homelessness looks different, like Erin was saying, uh, for students. Uh, so if you get evicted, you move in with a family or friends, and now you're homeless. You're not in a shelter necessarily, but now you're with, like, five other members, and you don't have a place to go. And homelessness doesn't mean they're always under a bridge. Uh, they're not invisible, but they're living with somebody else trying to find that housing. When we talk about social services budget, which is often what we're gonna discuss when they come to us, the need is there for, uh, individuals where too much bureaucracy is not involved, and they still wanna be anonymous, uh, because of other threats that might be in their life or other challenges they're going through, so we need to have them also at the table for representation. Nobody wants to go into a shelter and stay at an emergency shelter. They wanna find a place to go. So, I think those are some of the conversations hopefully a study like this will provide for us. Um, just because we don't see them in this room, we have a lot of, lot of issues with housing, and the minute we come to that thought of, "We have a problem, let's find a solution," this is one of those ways. And future commissioners do use such data. Uh, I've, I've seen, I mean, master plans that were here before I ever came on that we still pursued because they were, a document would content, constantly go to, the comprehensive plan, for example. We would constantly go to that. The UDO also fits into this, so we look at tiny homes, uh, smaller homes and, in a smaller spot, and where does banking fall into that? Where do developers fall into that? So, all of these need to work cohesively. Um, that's a lot that I've said, but hopefully it gives some direction as far as my understanding of what we wanna get out of a housing study. I know the discussions are gonna be ongoing, but as you develop that, um, request for proposals or requests for qualifications, I would like some of those things to be clear, and people who have done this before.
So, you were given a draft of the request for qualifications. Were there some elements missing or not quite clear? Or if you have other, uh, comments or inputs, I'd be happy to take them, but at the end of the day, we, we'd like to get the, if, if you're agreeable to it, the study, uh, that RFQ, uh, to you in, in short order, uh, for consideration and, and moving this project forward.
Just somebody who has experience in it, if we're-
Yeah, and that's what we're after. Uh, it's a special niche of planning and economics that, that we hope to hire, um, to give us some guidance.
Yeah, no, I think this covers it pretty well. Um...
My question had to do from the, the, uh, the section on development of the scope of work was, when you referenced other stakeholders, but then in your PowerPoint this evening, you've spelled out who the stakeholders you intend to engage, and then I've asked you to add public to it, the general public to it, too. So, the stakeholders are, are citizens ultimately, so-
And, and that list-
That was my question.
Yeah. Uh, we, we will, I mean, this is all, gonna be only as good as, uh, as the citizens that participate or our, our efforts to get out and, and, uh, work with our neighbors. Uh, so this list is really just a, a short, not complete list of folks that may serve on a committee or two. Uh, but getting this information back to the community and seeking input from them will be vital for a successful program.
I think if you can tell us when those are being organized, that would be great.
Sure.
So, we can reach out to some of those different demographics. Typically, uh, populations from minority populations or other populations are not reached out to as much.
Right.
Um, and we'll see if they can participate, or at least we can go to them also. I am looking forward to how the census comes out. It'll be interesting to see what those numbers look like, but...
It, it would be ideal if we waited till the census, but truthfully, I think this is too important of a document. Uh, and we'll still have plenty of good information about our housing stock and, and, uh, demographics that if we waited two years, we're two years further behind in finding homes for teachers, homes for professors, uh, and everyone or in-between. So, to me, this is an important document for us as a community, um, so we can make our workforce have a safe, comfortable spot to live in, not just, you know, homeless or students or whatever. It's the spectrum, in my opinion, so.
It is broad. Um, are there questions from the commu- from the public, or comments from the public?
Mayor and Commissioners, um, my name is Kristy Rodriguez. I'm the Program Director of Region Reimagine, and I just wanted to say that I, um, completely support the analysis. Um, we have been talking about it for more than a year. Um, it is a critical element that has been identified in the plan to, uh, look at how do we move forward in renovating and, and construction, both, um, to make sure that we have a community that supports our labor, um, our labor market. Uh, I hear all the time that people come and then they can't find a place that either they can afford or, um, that is suitable. When you look at demographic information, uh, aging in place, um, is key. We wanna be able to retain, um, our population as well, and so, from a Region Reimagine standpoint, it's critical that we have this data in order to, um, make data-driven decisions moving forward.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you.
Did you sign in?
Excuse me?
Did you sign in?
Oh, I can, yes. Thanks.
Other public comment?
This would be a good time to ask Chair-
This would be a good time to ask Chad. When you say the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, does that include under that umbrella the Region Reimagine effort? Because I want to be sure that Region Reimagine may have one emphasis and the chamber itself could have another, so I'm just making sure that both are represented.
So, yeah, my memo referenced the chamber broadly, but Kristi or Jason may have a different take on their support of housing, but yes, both Region Reimagine and the Chamber of Commerce.
And I can provide a little bit of clarification. So, Manhattan is a huge part of Region Reimagine, so.
Exactly.
Although some of the data will be looking at the region, as Chad said, that's yet to be defined, but I'm assuming it'll include the Region Reimagine components, but the strategies and the recommendations are going to be Manhattan-specific, and that will then launch Manhattan hopefully in a good direction moving forward. So, we have a Built Environment Work Group that Chad and a lot of people within the community serve on, and housing is the key focus. The last discussion that we had said, you know, everyone does have their opinion, but we need data to drive anything moving forward, so quite frankly, that group stopped meeting hoping that this analysis would come forward. Now, I think that there are things that we can do in the meantime to help move things forward, but without the data, we want to be making decisions based on that neutral data. Hopefully, that helps to explain.
I understand what you're saying. I just sometimes think the Business Advocacy Committee is made up of totally business people and not always an understanding of a sense of place and the built environment, and I just want to be sure that both of those make it through to the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. This was just a discussion, so there's no vote necessary. Are there other comments from the city commission? Yes?
I was just going to say, so Chad on that, the members from the neighborhood, the ten different areas, so that'd be additional ten potential people if we can identify them in those sections that you have in our packet that are blocked off. So, that kind of could also fill a lot of gaps for people that we don't have listed out in different ways. I think the challenge that you have before you and the challenge we may have if we have an advisory council or board is to bring all those stakeholders that are listed there to the table and to keep them at the table is the challenge. And so, this may be a carrot. This study may be a carrot. There's several things we have to do to get them to stay at the table, but right now, that's the biggest thing that's been missing is there's been siloed activity all over the place with all the different anecdotes come out from that where there isn't a centralized clearinghouse of that information, sharing of data and moving forward. So, I think it's an endeavor that we should be doing, and I'm glad that we're hopefully starting that process.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Mike?
Just to wrap up my rant on affordable housing, the, yeah, like, my interest lies in the fact that what is driving up the cost of housing in Manhattan compared to everywhere else? And so, it doesn't, I don't want to form some formal committee, but I may call half a dozen people and get together for beers and talk about what drives up the cost of construction. Is it the cost of land? Is it digging through rock every time to put in sewer water streets? Is it the code things? Is it the zoning regulations make it too hard? Is it the fact that obviously everybody flocks over to Pot County because of lower property taxes because of Jeffrey Energy Center, and we don't have anything like that to pay half of the property taxes for the county like Pot County does? But, at some point, I think, yeah, whatever part of lack of affordable housing the government is causing, I think, I want to spend some time focusing on that. Is it the oversizing of water mains? They started putting in six-inch instead of four-inch water mains in subdivisions, even though I don't think there's any complaints of water pressure issues, but that's an extra thousand dollars a hundred yards or something, or whatever it is, that oversizing. Or is it strictly property taxes with everything is, if that's what is driving up housing costs so much? Because rentals, landlords never pay the property tax. It's always passed on to the tenants. So, every time they pass a bond issue and they talk about a hundred fifty thousand dollar house paying X amount of money, well, a seven hundred dollar, two-bedroom apartment just got socked for an extra fifty dollars because of the property tax increases between the school board county and the little bit the city did. So, at some point, I'm going to, over the next three years, focus a little bit more on, okay, what can we do to stop driving up the cost of housing? And then, I don't know exactly what we can do to drive it down, and I don't know what we can do to repurpose existing housing other than come up with some kind of rehabilitation project things where the city puts a little bit of money. I'm not interested, apparently to get the downtown, continue to redevelop the downtown, that's probably going to require a whole bunch of city money, and I don't think anybody's ready for that again. But, if we could do some things through something, I would like us to start looking to see, how can we encourage some of this older housing to be redeveloped, to be improved? I'm all in favor of getting old stock revitalized and not just tearing it down and building another twelve-plex. God forbid we'd get any more of those, but that's the kind of thing I would like to spend a little bit of time sometime, and maybe I'll do it on my own and report back to you. But, that is an issue that has been ignored, and we, if we're going to seriously look at what we can do about making housing affordable, that has to be a little bit of thing we look at. What is driving it up, and what are we doing that's driving it up, and can we stop doing that?
Yeah, no, I agree with you completely. I think there are some factors that we do have control over between the school district, the city, and the county as far as property taxes and bond initiatives. That is something we can look closer at, and property valuation's going up. Being in a university town in itself creates a different type of property valuation compared to some of our regional areas. I think that's one place we are constantly trying to see how to keep, but the CDBG funds and other funds that we have in place trying to revitalize some of those, and we have the Manhattan Housing Authority and the Judo ones and all of these things. So, I think those are some things we constantly have to look at, and maybe some people are not educated enough about those either. The bureaucracy as far as filling out paperwork is so much, it's almost like you need a different degree just to fill out some of those applications. And I think those are some methods that we need to have people working with the individuals that are in need of affordable housing. We have some stock there, and like I said, the paperwork is huge, or they don't meet some of those requirements. That's the other piece and how to work through that. Yeah.
One of the, I think, my, one of the things that came out of our retreat that was really enlightening to me was that Commissioner Butler, Commissioner Hattasol have a whole lot of passion about creating workforce or affordable housing, but not necessarily from the same perspective as you often hear other people. And so, that was enlightening to me, removing those barriers, finding ways to make things more affordable by getting government out of the way. Inefficiencies are a part of this discussion, so I think that's, it doesn't get said enough, and maybe I'll never say it again, but they had some good ideas.
Okay. Go ahead. Did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, you know, Ron always takes on the staff, you know, the discussion, and then they move on, so it sounds like the majority of the commission's interested in pursuing the RFQ, but I would like to get the commission to make a comment on funding. What I want to know is, does the commission as a whole agree to use the water fund to fund this thing? And of course, you already know my thought on that. We ought to say absolutely no, and then the staff can come up with a funding plan that doesn't include that.
I have always been an advocate of conserving the economic development money and waiting for some of these idealistic, I guess, since we haven't had any practical ones come along, but I'm willing to fund this out of economic development. I think it is that important that we develop, that we know ourselves and have access to this data. And some people say, "Show me the data." Well, we're after the data with this project, and that makes sense to me.
Other comments?
I would be comfortable with joining Linda on that through economic development. I, there's, to me, the water fund is important, but also trying to solve affordable housing by using the water money is also a tricky argument, but if there is availability in the Economic Development Fund at this point for this to work, I would be all for that.
It's probably not anything CDBG funds could be used for, or there's no other HUD drafts or anything for stuff like that.
It could if it was in a, just looking at a qualified particular area. Potentially, it'd be, have to get it in your annual plan, and it would be difficult.
Yeah. Well, I don't either know how much money is in the EcoDevo thing, but yeah, it's, I'm not comfortable with using the utility funds for everything, and since we've already, yeah, we're four, five meetings into the year, and we've already rated them for three different things, it seems like. We can see if there's EcoDevo money available, that would probably be as justifiable as anything, but I may still vote against it anyway, so.
Just to clarify, approved in the 2020 budget, it was about fifty-nine thousand of the ninety-five thousand dollar total that was EcoDevo, and then the remaining thirty thousand dollars was split among the water, wastewater, and stormwater. So, you'd be increasing the EcoDevo cost about thirty thousand dollars if you wanted to fund it fully from EcoDevo.
Yeah, I can support that or any other source other than the enterprise funds. I mean, that's just what my issue is.
Yeah. Now, I don't mind if we use the EcoDevo funds, but I do think even if we use the enterprise funds, when you think about housing, part of that is water sources and how we, how that impacts some of these housing studies, the places where people live. I'm not uncomfortable using the enterprise fund, so to me, it doesn't matter which fund we use in this particular study. I think the outcome is eventually we will have data enough to make sure we have housing, which also includes our pipes and whatever plumbing systems that we want to have and where they are, because some of the areas that have the worst infrastructure as far as our stormwater systems is where some of the expenses are falling because of flooding and such. So, I think we need to think about it in a comprehensive manner, especially for a housing study. When you think about housing, a lot of water systems are involved in housing, and where they are located is sometimes more expensive. Even the house may not be expensive, but because of the infrastructure that's there, they may be experiencing more types of displacement or water issues, and that's part of the problem we're having right now.
I can actually support the enterprise funds too, I'm just to clarify, because housing is what generates those funds, and so, there is a direct tie and a direct relationship between the two. But, if it takes using the Economic Development Fund to get off a dead center or to get enough to support this, then I would do that.
To me, the only direct tie to the water funds and affordable housing is as you raise your water bills, it makes housing less affordable. You know, when you come in here to buy a house, and I did this the first time in seventy-eight, what do you look at? Property tax? What are your utilities cost? What are your water rates? What are your sewer rates? You look at what the total bill's going to be. It's not just the interest rate on the house or the mortgage, and that's why I'm adamant, and I brought it up at the retreat, that we need to stop rating the enterprise funds to cover other things, and we should use it only for enterprise fund functions. And that means using it to fix the sewer lines, the water lines, the flooding and all that, and quit using it to pay dues for the Kansas National League of Cities and hire consultants to do studies.
Okay. Well, you're digressing because I think you're probably going to vote no on this anyway.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, so it has nothing to do with which fund it comes out of. But, in this case, because we are talking about housing, where the pipes are, if they are not adequately sufficient in the infrastructure of the housing, we usually have one, some of our most vulnerable populations in those areas that get flooded, and sometimes that's cheap housing. So, we need to be clear when we are talking about a housing study that we are also keeping our citizens safe from flooding. So, I don't see it as two separate issues. EcoDevo, I mean, we put it from Economic Development Funds, but my idea of Economic Development Funds is also job creation. But, I'm comfortable using Economic Development Funds for this, but I'm also comfortable with using enterprise funds for this because I see both of those as a comprehensive place for a housing study. Any other comments? Okay.
Oh, real quick, sorry, just had to wait till you looked.
Last word, Erin. Go ahead. I know.
I, if we move forward, since it sounds like it's not going to matter either way with the way it's written today with the water, that's fine for the other two. I will support moving the water fund. I want it to be known that I see housing as economic development. I think that's where it's at. That's what we've heard, so that's why that is, if we could do it that way, we could do it that way. If we have a motion before us and you, somebody else wants to make it as is, then.
There's no motion.
I mean, next, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, but going forward, I would be okay with either.
So, I think you have a majority. I'm not sure what all you heard, but I heard a majority for a few things.
Appreciate the discussion. Yeah, I think we got some good feedback.
Okay, if there are no other comments or discussion, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.